I'd like to call the city council meeting Monday, February 10th to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Father, and with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes? If you have a motion to approve the January 27th regular city council meeting minutes?
So moved. Morgan Adams?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
I don't need it.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no presentations or confirmations or proclamations. So we'll go right to the consent agenda. Item A, Resolution R 2509, staff memo on resolution authorizing and awarding bid recommendation for the Elm Street flood control project with Gonzano Sewer and Water for a cost of $134,925. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Everybody knows what this is for. This is the underpass under Elm Street, correct?
Right, right. Where the Park District floods.
Right.
Have restored the ball fields.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item B, Resolution R 2510, staff memo and resolution authorizing an agreement for Public Works asset and maintenance software from PSD Citywide for software licensing, implementation, training, and annual maintenance for a total cost of $53,500. And this would be subject to attorney review. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved. Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mark, do you want to give us a 30-second description of what this is about so everybody else knows?
Absolutely, sir. We've been working for the last six months trying to decide which vendor we're going to go with. The asset management part is something we've been missing in Public Works since Public Works was created. Everything's being done by spreadsheets and paper pads. This gives us the ability to automate everything we do, put things in a proper order, and monitor, and have history of everything that we're doing. This program and software ties in and has the ability to integrate with other platforms we're currently using. So our GIS and things like that can all merge together and have the same type of database. We've worked with the building department to make sure that the microfiche that's going to be done also works in with this. So this is giving us a solid platform for everything and also gives us the ability to produce data, which in the past has taken painless hours of calculating spreadsheets and old timesheets on what we do. So this is the step in the right direction. I wish I would have been presenting this a few years ago when we had the COVID epidemic. This kind of got scrapped and pushed off. And now we're right where we need to be. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item nine, new business. We have two first readings. First one is Ordinance O 2501, staff memo and ordinance amending certain conditions to Ordinance O-0833 for fence height and materials at 1 East Willow Road. This is just the first reading. Dan, you want to just give us a quick overview?
Thank you very much, Mayor Alderman. The resident Monte Monterrosa who's here this evening has applied for changes to an existing variation that his mother received back in 2008. That original ordinance, there was a limitation on the height and building materials of that fence due to the non-conforming frontage of the lot. So the relief was granted to allow them to build the fence along the north side property line along Willow Road up to the property line as shown in the top image with the blue line. After a hearing, a continuation at the last ZBA hearing, the ZBA recommended the request for a six-foot-high vinyl fence in the gray material, oops, excuse me, to be installed and to hold back three feet off that northern property line so a three-foot planting bed could be planted with natural plants. He testified that he'd worked with the Natural Resources Commission so that 50% of the mass of the fence, the vinyl fence, would be covered by natural vegetation, breaking up that large long fence along Willow Road. And then due to a large existing stump and tree area, the last 52 feet were recommended to go out, back out to the north property line and to grant the variation, the amendments of the height and condition based on those conditions. It was a three-to-two vote. It was not unanimous, but it did have a positive recommendation. And if there are any questions, the applicant is here tonight. Thank you.
Dan, just a quick question about the material. Because I noticed this was about, you know, there was discussion about the material type. Do we have anything in our code about the type of material? Or is it just the, you know, that there has to be openings in the fence itself? What's special about this?
Actually, the only thing that's special about this one is because of the pre-existing variation on this lot. A six-foot vinyl fence could go on an interior lot. It could go to other places. If Mr. Monterrosa wanted to hold back the fence 13 feet off of the property line, he could have built this by right, just a six-foot vinyl fence. But because it had the variation to be allowed as a corner side yard to be put on the property line instead of held back the distance, that's what triggered the amendment to that original ordinance.
Okay. So this is the first reading. So if anybody has any questions, they can contact Dan. This will be on the next meeting, which will be 24th?
So I had a quick question, though. Okay, so the, now the condition was that it was offset to allow for plantings?
Yes.
But he was proposing it, or, excuse me, they were proposing it in the same location of the fences at now, correct? So the original application was there's an existing fence, we want to replace it with the vinyl fence, but because of the previous variants, they were restricted on height?
Correct, and materials.
Materials.
Correct.
And the applicant did testify that he was planning to put native plantings originally, but that would have meant he was planting them in the city right of way. So that's where the compromise to pull the, that area back three feet to allow him to put the planting, which the applicant agreed to, that he testified that he was good with that. And his original fence application was for the white, was for the white fence. And then he also agreed to change the color to the less bright gray.
And do neighbors in the area have fencing of a certain height? Or, I'm just thinking about how it blends in with the surrounding area.
There's, most of the fencing along Willow is not right up on the side. His fence has been, I think, the main one. The person across the street has one that's, but that's set back about 15 feet as well because all those lots along Willow are non-conforming. We do have a handful of vinyl fences in town, but most of those are on interior lots.
I have a question. I have one. The landscape, will it have varying heights or is it all one straight? Or can you vary the height of the different plantings?
Monty, if you'd like to come and answer. Yes, come on up. Name an address for the record, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Monte Monterrosa. I have 1 East Willow Road, Prospect Heights. So your question regards to heights? Yes, I'm planning on putting a variation of different plants so that it has different heights, different flowers, and so that with the seasons it has more of a picturesque look as it kind of goes through the seasons as well.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Had you considered a cedar fence?
We had considered a cedar fence, but with all the maintenance I'd had to do thus far, I figured this was a better option so that there's no maintenance required for the next 20 years or probably the rest of my life, essentially.
You might want to take a look at the cedar fence that was installed at Fairway Estates on Euclid. And we've been there 40 years. This is only the second fence that we've had.
Yeah, but don't you have to seal it and stain it?
No, no, we don't.
Zero maintenance.
Right, it'd be natural. So you might want to just take a look at it.
Did you have any flooding by you? Because I know--
No, we don't have any flooding.
There would be flooding there because it's in the plain zone, flooding plain zone?
So that's why you want plastic or vinyl?
Yeah, so I'd have to keep reinforcing them with metal straps and everything.
Okay.
I think beauty is in the eye of the beholder, huh?
Yeah, the vinyl is.
That's why I asked if there's some prohibition to plastic or PVC.
PVC is a very standard, maintenance-free option. Most, if not all HOAs allow for it. I mean, a lot of them don't want the cedar or split rail because of the maintenance requirements. So, I mean, PVC fences are very common.
Our code, our code specifically states it's an approved material.
Thank you. We don't have any flooding, so we don't have that issue.
So we'll see you back in two weeks. Is it the 24th?
Correct.
24th. Thank you. Item B, Ordinance O 2502, staff memo and ordinance approving a special use for a sit-down restaurant at 1209 Unit B, North Elmhurst Road, Tacos Los Gallos. It's a first reading also, so nothing to be approved tonight. But, Dan, you want to run down?
Again, this is, this is a new restaurant going into the mall at 1201, 1213 North Elmhurst that had the fire. The Los Posadas space was vacated. And Mrs. Maria Gonzalez is here to bring back a Mexican-style family restaurant. Limited seating, but mainly carryout, but it still was required to go through the special use. Jim Teneglia is her architect who's working on the design plan and got, this received a unanimous recommendation.
Any questions? We'll see you back in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10, staff and elected officials and commission reports. We'll start on the right side here. Staff, Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is February, so that means it is vehicle sticker season. If you haven't been bombarded with a request to get your vehicle sticker, you will be shortly. You should all be receiving your renewals in the mail if you have not already received them. Please come early, don't wait to the last minute. You have until March 31st, which is a Monday, to purchase your vehicle stickers. And don't forget, you also need, if you have a motorcycle that is registered to a Prospect Heights address, you need motorcycle tags. And if you have dogs or cats at your residence, you need to have animal tags. All this information is on our website. And if you don't want to go to our website, if you want to talk to a human being, feel free to call City Hall, and we'll be more than happy to discuss it with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob?
Mark? Just real briefly, winter is actually going to show up this week. So we just ask to remind residents to not blow their snow into the driveway. Keep an eye on your neighbors. It's going to be a little slick. We have a crew of guys out working during these events. And give them a little space in the road. And try not to park in the street after a snow until we get everything cleared away. And please be safe. Winter has been very mild for us this year, and we really appreciate that. But we're going to, we're actually going to feel a little bit this week. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Thank you very much. Good news to report. We've got the agreement signed with both the scanning services and laser fiche this week. We should be starting our scanning project here in the next two weeks. Additionally, I've had my first Friday update from Tuska, Michael Blue. He's got the first chapter of the administrative section done, and I'll be getting that for review. And he's starting it on the second. When he gets a few of the chapters together, we'll be pulling our committee together, a couple council people, a couple ZBA members and a resident to kind of go through, review the process. So it was a good week this week.
Good report. Thank you.
Chief?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to highlight two events coming up in February. The first one is Coffee with the PHPD, Tuesday, February 18th at 6:30 PM at the Rob Roy Clubhouse. This is an event that we did last year. We had a lot of success. Essentially, we present to anyone that's willing to come. Rob Roy is gracious enough to host Prospect Heights residents. Come meet your police department, meet the newly selected chief, deputy chief, sergeant. And the second one is the annual PD Award and PHPD Volunteer Program Ceremony. It's where we honor police officers, police department staff, our wonderful volunteer staff. That's going to be held on Thursday, February 27th at 6:30 PM at the Old Orchard Golf Course. Once again, we honor them for their outstanding work, their dedication, life-saving awards, different commendations throughout the year for their work. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I skipped you Lloyd.
No, no, I'm all good. Nothing for me.
We'll start down here with elected. Anything?
Thank you. Yes, Mayor, thank you. The, our executive director, Mike Putz of the Greater Wheeling Chamber, is inviting all of us to the event. It's actually this Wednesday, February 10th, I'm sorry, 13th, from 8:30 to 10:00. It is, it will be a legislative forum. This will be a chance to meet and engage directly with lawmakers. So you can ask all your questions, whether it's business, other community questions, if you're a business owner, if anyone here on the dais, we did pass that out. Thank you, Lloyd, for doing that for me. In attendance, the lawmakers will be Congresswoman Jan Jakowski will be there, Senator Adrian Johnson, Senator Julie Morrison, Representative Mary Beth Canty, Representative Tracy Katz-Muell, Representative Daniel Diddich, and there possibly some other key legislators will join us. So please feel free to stop by. You know, there are many questions I'm sure everyone has. This is an opportunity to finally ask your questions, and perhaps they could help us on other issues that maybe we've had trouble, you know, reaching out to them. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
No, I don't have a key.
Wendy? Matt? Danielle? Okay. I just would like to say and congratulate and say I'm excited to be working with the new chief and the deputy chief. It's always exciting when, when people move up and assume the responsibility that they were looking to get and are embracing it and wanting to really make a difference. It's good to see. So it's exciting times.
Thank you. We're both very excited, too.
So thank you for that. Item 11, approval of warrants. Will the clerk please read the warrants and expenditures?
Yes, thank you. The total of our expenditures amounted to $184,312.46. There was a wire payment on January 24th, 2025, in the amount of $204,142.23. Bringing the total warrant amount to $384,726.69 for council's approval tonight, please.
We need a motion to approve?
So moved. Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 12, public comment on non-agenda matters. Are there any tickets?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have Ken Salmons, I don't know if I'm pronouncing Salmons. Thank you, if you can please approach.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the forum and thank you for letting me be here tonight. I live at 114 South School Lane here in Prospect Heights. My wife and I love living here. We moved here about eight and years ago from Marvin and the Heights to flee the gigantic tax bill that we had on our home, and we wanted to downsize. And as Dan found out later on down the road, we thought the place was too small, so we put an addition up. And here's a concerned citizen, and it's a very touchy topic tonight that I bring up. I read an article, my background is broadcast communications, and I also host a podcast as well. And I read an article on the village manager of Mount Prospect having a $371,000 a year salary, and they voted to give him a $30,000 raise. And it kind of piqued my interest, and I went, wow, it's a nice gig if you get it. So I started noodling around a little bit, looking here, looking there, pulled some information off the village's website to see salaries. And I, just a glaring number, and I apologize to anybody here in the room today, I'm not going to be name-specific to anybody, but we're a village of 15,334 people. Now, that may have gone up, may have gone down since the last census. The salary is 23% more than a village, a neighbor of us, which would either be Rolling Meadows or Elk Grove. Their salaries, their population is 35% less than Rolling Meadows and 51% less than Elk Grove, and yet the salaries of those city managers is 43%, 23% less. Now, I've lived here a long, eight and a half years. I know it's a landlocked city. We have very little room for development here, from what I could see. Capital improvement projects that I know, this was the big flood project up on Rand Road. I know that there's some big project going on over at the airport lately. But other than that, I haven't seen any real major capital improvements to the city. And I was wondering, as a concern, what might be happening down the road? Is there any out-of-the-box thinking? At one point, they used to have a private pilot's license and used to fly out of Pel Walkie. They have a 5,100-square-foot runway. An Umbra jet can land on 4,100 feet. Has anyone thought out of the box about possibly using that airport for small local commuter flights with American Airlines, United Airlines, SkyWest, anything, just to create, generate some revenue? And I know, you're probably also shaking your head saying, I'm crazy. I look at Tony's parking lot, where Tony's Finder Food is. It's a desert. It's a massive parking lot that basically gets unused. If you go down to where Floor Decor is in the Arlington Heights area, you've noticed that they've built some outlet businesses now that's generating tax revenue. I'm not of any government knowledge, but eminent domain. Has anyone thought about anything that we could do here? For example, when we lived in Bartlett, they needed to build a high school, and they exchanged land with the county so they could continue building the high school. Again, it was a compromise. And I just feel like things might be stagnant here. So out of my concern, a few things. I'm curious about the salary. I understand everybody wants to make everything they can possibly make. Chicago's mayor makes $220,000 a year, and their population is 173 times more than the village or the city of Prospect Heights. I do watch the board meetings. I look at my tax bill. My taxes have gone up almost nearly 30% since I've been here. What I ran away from? I'm just curious, I'm just throwing some ideas out there. If I'm off-base, tell me I'm off-base. I'm just concerned about the direction of where the city is going. And if there's any, I mentioned a few crazy ideas, don't know if there's been any thought to that or if it can't be done. But I am curious about some of the salaries that we have here. And then along the lines of looking at some of the salaries, some inequalities. And again, I'm not going to get into specifics publicly here, but if you happen to talk with anyone privately, I think that basically is my concern. Thank you.
I'm not, I'm not going to, we won't debate about this, but I just want to just point some things out. I spent probably six or eight hours on Saturday when I saw your email going through and finding stuff, because that's what I do. You can't sit here and not be that kind of person to spend six or eight hours on a Saturday looking up information, so. And I don't mean this to embarrass, you know, the facts or figures that you put forward, but the information's incorrect.
No, I'm ready for it because I said to my wife, I said, I might get slammed with it.
And I'm not going to, I applaud you for coming in. You're here, right? And there's 15,500 people in Prospect Heights that aren't here right now, right? So that's why I'm not going to, I'm not going to pick on you, but I just, when you say something at the podium, I just feel the need to correct, you know, errors. The number you used for a salary was all-in for the city of Prospect Heights. Elk Grove and Rolling Meadows are significantly higher when you look, you compare the all-in price here to the salary price of those other municipalities. But when you look salary to salary, it's still not even close. We're not even in the same ballpark. The municipalities around us, the average is 269,000 for the 10 municipalities closest to us. And, you know, when you leave, we're number 10, lowest. And when you leave us and go up, there's a huge jump just to get to number nine, right? And then it goes up from there. So we're not, we're not out of line by any stretch of the imagination. The other thing, too, is when you look at some of these other towns around us, you know, it's like Paul Harvey, me, a radio guy, I love Paul Harvey. But the rest of the story on some of this is, too, when you look at the city of Prospect Heights, we have the city administrator and a assistant city administrator. When you look at the towns around us and what they have, as I'm trying to find my information here, you look at Elk Grove, they have a village manager, deputy village manager, an assistant village manager, and a human resources director for a total of $733,000. Rolling Meadows, I'm going to have to take a breath between reading all these positions, city manager, assistant to the city manager, assistant city manager, human services director, human resources specialist, and a human services office manager at $795,000. We have a city administrator, an assistant administrator, slash HR. He holds both spots. It's easy to come into here and think we're like any other town, but unfortunately, we're not. I wish we were. It'd make my life easier, but we're not. We are much smaller, we're, we get by on almost nothing. You know, I mean, it's amazing what we get by on. I also, for fear that your tax bill was wrong, you know, that something's wrong, because I actually helped somebody who had brought a tax bill to me, and we found that they were being, it was not correct. They had a mistake on it. We were able to get it fixed. So I pulled up yours, public record, you know that, it's out there. And when you take all the taxing districts that are on your tax bill and your EAV, and I compare your EAV, I found one in Mount Prospect, exact same dollar, exact amount. And what's interesting is, other than the school district, the elementary school district, the park district, and the library, everything else is the same. You know, we all use mosquito abatement, you know, Wheeling Towns-- You know, we all use mosquito abatement, you know, Wheeling Township. All four billing sections of Cook County on the property tax are all the same. Of the 10 different districts, when they're grouped together, Prospect Heights is number eight on what we charge. And Prospect Heights, a tax bill for a similar home to yours is $338. It's all you're paying for the city of Prospect Heights. But when you look at the Mount Prospect tax bill, they pay to the village of Mount Prospect $843. So there's a big difference in what we collect. And I don't do that, I'm not saying this to pick on you, that you didn't do your homework, but I applaud you for it and wish you would do more. I wish you'd come to our meetings. You brought up the Tonys. We approved two pad sites for retail restaurants in the Tony's parking lot. So we are doing things like that all the time.
A good add on that. Oftentimes, when there's a shopping center, there's restrictions for the Tony's ownership out of San Diego. It's very much concerned about their visibility. So when we approved, and I believe Dan, last year was a coffee shop, and for also a Popeyes. But the existing tenants have an interest in whether they're, so it's, sometimes it's just a little bit more complicated than would appear. And also with the airport.
And again, I said, this dash email that we started doing some research in what I was able to just dig out, learning about the compensation packages. And again, I'm sorry, can I?
Yeah.
I'll do this till midnight. That's how I am. I don't mind talking about this. It's good to talk about.
I guess I'm looking, I'm trying to compare apples to apples. So if a village has 54,000 residents, and we have 15,000 residents, I'm just trying to wrap my.
Let me give an example real quick, Joe, because I, so I work in home building, and I get subdivisions approved in municipalities. And for me to get a subdivision approved with 50 lots is the same exact process as for me to get a subdivision approved with 5,000 lots, because I have to hire an engineer, and a surveyor, and a planner, and a landscape architect. I have to make the application of the municipality. I have to hire an attorney. I have to have the plans put together. So for us, the process of 50 lots is the same as 5,000 lots. And like the city of Prospect Heights, we have to do all of the same things that our surrounding municipalities have to do. We have to do the budget process. We have to handle HR matters. We have, and there's like a long list, staffing, communications, like all these things that we have to do, our counterparts have to do, too. And we have to do it with less, because to your point, our resources are limited. We're a non-home rule community. Talking about the tax bills, right? We don't levy a real estate tax for general fund purposes, right, Joe? Isn't, and this is why I said in my email, like, I'm not a finance person.
The only property tax we levy for is from a bond issue, I think about 2011 or so?
Well, we have two. We have the road program, which was passed by referendum.
But that's an SSA, like.
But the only one that we have is a police pension. We collect about $450,000 in police pension on a property tax. That's it. You know, the village of Arlington Heights collects $8 million in property tax for police, $8 million in property tax for fire, $8 million for police protection. I mean, these are huge, huge numbers. And at some point, my goal is to, you know, come up with, I'm a numbers person, so I like to know, like, what we spend based on our population for, you know, for certain things. And, you know, what we spend on our police department, how do I say it? Based on our population, if I take our budget and divide it, what we spend per resident, you know, on our police is drastically different than what the other towns do, right? It's, we have a lot more population per dollar that we have to cover. And when you're driving, when you're living in Prospect Heights, you want to dial 911, we all do, and have the police show up, or the fire department show up, or the streets plowed and things done. You don't notice a difference. If you drove two miles and went from Arlington Heights all the way to Glenview, you really don't notice a difference. You don't say, this is Arlington Heights because I can tell this part of Euclid feels like Arlington Heights, or this part of Euclid feels like Prospect. It's all the same. We all have to do the same thing. And we have the same burdens as any other town. We just are smaller. And our people are paid less, you know? I'm not going to pick on the police, but they don't make what Arlington Heights police make. Not even close. Not even close to Wheeling. I mean, there's a huge disparity. So that is baked in already. When people come to work here, they realize that they're not going to make what their counterparts make. And to use the argument, well, we're smaller, they should make less. If a guy's doing heart surgery, a doctor's doing a heart surgery in Chicago, should he make four times more than one that does it in Green Bay? Isn't it just the same? He's got to do the same thing, right? Just because of where he's at doesn't matter what he should get paid. I mean, it just is what it is. But there is an adjustment. I mean, if you went down our salaries and compared same positions, Mount Prospect, Arlington Heights, and Wheeling, there is a noticeable difference, noticeable.
So with regards to businesses that I see in the area, like insurance agents and dentist offices that don't create or generate any revenue for the city, does the city have the right to, if something comes in to deny somebody, because you're looking for a tenant that's going to generate tax dollars rather than nothing?
We can encourage it. We can encourage it, you know? But you can't necessarily just tell people they can't come locate here.
But to your point, yeah, we could turn down a business because we don't feel like it generates enough revenue, but what does that leave us with? An empty storefront, right? Vacancies in strip malls that really don't do anything for property values. And I think, too, like, when Barcelado, like, came in and like remodeled, right? Like, well, I'm sure everyone on this panel would like love a Gibson's there, or would love a, you know, rosebud or something, right? Because they're going to sell lots of food and they're going to make lots of money. But like, let's be, like, we have to be realistic about our expectations, right? Like, would a Gibson's ever locate a restaurant on that corner?
No, there's not.
They would, right, right. So I think, like, and we've, so that's where we're torn, right? Would everyone love a big box, like a Walmart, you know, a Target? I mean, we, Target was Prospect Heights, and the elected officials before anyone sitting up here basically gave that land away. Roto Car Dealership was Prospect Heights. We gave it away, or, you know.
Well, it was before. I mean, the history of Prospect Heights is, we are what was left over after Arlington Heights, Wheeling, and Mount Prospect were done doing what they were doing.
Yeah, and the properties.
And the Prospect Heights got formed, and that was all that was there. So we didn't get to pick and choose. We have no car dealer. We have no big box store. I mean, how do you survive like?
But the property that we could have had in prior.
If we would have incorporated before, if we would have incorporated long ago instead of being just 50 years ago.
So with regards to the airport, my understanding is Prospect Heights owns about, what, 300?
Know how much revenue we get from the airport?
Yeah.
We get more, we get more out of Thorntons. We get more out of Thorntons than we get out of the entire airport.
Right, right. I mean, I'm not off-base here with the zero, right? Because we were getting at one point some revenue from gas sales at the airport, right? So, right, but it's less than what it was, right? So, but that's the only real, I mean, there are others. Yeah, it's not a meaningful, like.
And by FAA regulation, it's supposed to be reinvested into the airport, which we can justify because there's some services, police protection, and others. But the airport, not here or anywhere else, is really a moneymaker.
We get to say we own half of it. After that, don't look at anything else.
So sometimes people come and complain about the airport budget, and they tell us, oh, they should lower their rates so it's more cost-effective, sort of like people like you who would fly out of there. And I'm like, how can we tell them to charge less when, in theory, if there's a shortfall, they're going to come ask the city of Prospect Heights for money? We don't have any money to support the airport. Like, they have to generate the revenue to support themselves, because we can't help out. We don't have any.
It can benefit other taxing districts. The approval that we did recently for Sky Harbor, that's a significant property tax generator. Yes, yes. But that, really, the ones that reap the benefit of that are the other taxing districts. High school, elementary school.
I love 214. Okay, well, I'll leave it to him, right now.
But you should also mention all the, you do have a lot of projects.
We're glad you could come tonight. Honestly, I was, I meant that, that you could come.
Can you mention some of the road projects or?
Sure. Just so you know, there's Arlington Countryside Stormwater Management. That was about a 40-year goal. We leveraged money for that. We have next, this coming season, starting the East Side Willow Trails neighborhood stormwater project. That's all total probably about three and a half, $4 million project. So there are projects going on.
And the sidewalk project.
Sidewalk, yeah.
No, the park district does.
And also, one last thing, as far as scheduled service in and out of Chicago Executive Airport, that's not a city's decision or a municipality's decision to invite them in. The FAA controls what scheduled service can go in and out of each airport. So we can't just call an executive at American or United and say, hey, you want to start flying in and out of here?
I understand if a feasibility study would be done.
Yeah, no, I understand. And I, too, appreciate you coming in. I think this kind of dialogue is very helpful to everyone. So I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll put him on the committee for home rule.
There we go. Put you on the committee.
Put you on the committee for home rule.
Right, but, right.
Okay, where were we? That's it, right? Adjournment? No executive session. We don't have an executive session tonight, so there'll be no action on that executive session. So we only have adjournment. I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Anderson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Or adjourn.